Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May eighth, two thousand twenty-four City of Calabasas regularly scheduled council meeting. I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, council members Bizzagian, Shapiro, and Albrecht, as well as our city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication public comment. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your city of residence. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The pledge of allegiance will be led tonight by our Public Works Director, Curtis Castle.
Please rise and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Curtis. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does our city attorney have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session and considered one item, item number one, regarding a potential litigation against the city related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. The council provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. The other three items on closed session, one, two, and three, will be continued after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are going to move on to our presentations, and our first presentation are grant checks to our PFCs and PFAs. And just a little history. The City of Calabasas many years ago decided that they wanted to support our schools directly, and the best way to do that would be giving money directly to the PFCs or PFAs because that would be a group that the city can work with, know where the money's going, and who's involved. Instead of getting funneling the money to the school district, this would be a way for the city to be involved. So we work very closely all year with these organizations, and normally we do the check presentation just with the council, but I thought it would be a good idea for this to be done at a council meeting, so everyone can be a part of it, hear what these organizations are doing, and how they're making our community better for our schoolchildren. So if you guys want to stand when I call your name, tonight we are joined with Samantha Barnett and Wendy Russo, who are co-presidents from Bay Laurel. Krista Mulligan and Nicole Perkins, presidents from Chaparral. Holly Gibson, Lupin Hill. Julie Burkus, AC Stella. Patricia Agos, A. Wright. And Natalie Klein, Vice President of Communications for Calabasas High School. So thank you to everything that you guys do to help support our schools and our community. So thank you so much. Do any of you guys, are you planning to speak at all? Do you have any comments? No?
Just thank you.
Okay.
We couldn't do what we did.
You can actually, and then you can fill a card up af- fill a card afterwards and give it to our city clerk. If you could introduce yourself, city of residence.
Sure. Julie Burkus, City of Calabasas and PFC President for AC Stella. I just wanted to say thank you. We couldn't, we wouldn't be as successful without your support, so we're very appreciative and look forward to continuing our partnership with the city.
Thank you, Julie. And after you guys speak, if you can just make sure you fill out cards.
Hi, I'm Natalie Klein, and I came with a little something written. On behalf of Amy Grayson and the PFC at CHS, we just wanted to extend our deepest gratitude to the Calabasas City Council for their generous grant awarded to Calabasas High School Parent Association. Your support significantly impacts not only the students, but also the entire community. Moving forward, we aim to utilize this grant to address crucial areas such as traffic and safety, cultural awareness, and community outreach. By fostering a sense of unity and engagement, we hope to encourage local residents to become an integral part of the Calabasas High School community. Once again, we thank you and for your unwavering support and commitment to enhancing the educational and social and emotional experience for all students and their families at Calabasas.
Thanks, Natalie. Anyone else want to speak? Okay. Do any of my colleagues have comments? David?
I would just say, again, thank you for all your hard work. I know most of the work you put in is a labor of love for kids and making the education and the opportunities for all students to be better, and so it's really appreciated. And I know it's probably a thankless job, but tonight you get to represent your schools and receive grants that are used as you've provided information to us for the right purposes. So keep doing your great work, and thank you.
Ed?
Hi, thank you very much. I had the pleasure last year of presenting checks with Councilman Shapiro. It was my first experience doing that. It was great. It reminded me what our kids were at Chaparral and how valuable those funds are. So I know you use them wisely and hope it continues for many, many years.
Thank you, and I believe the checks are being mailed. Okay. And I think we're going to just take a picture with everyone, so we can have that. Oh, Peter, do you want to say something?
I'll just add real quickly. For all of you volunteers out there, we know how hard you work. Most of us have friends and family that have served as parent faculty club and parent and PFA organization board members and volunteers, and we know how many hours you put in. And, you know, our check is just that, it's a check, but your time is so precious, and we want to say thank you for taking care of our schools.
And I did want to add a little bit that this is something we've been doing in one form or another for over twenty years, and it's something the city gladly does, and I understand that not every city in the area does it, but we are happy to do this for our own schools here in Calabasas and to set a good example.
So thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. As we say each year, keep us in the loop of what's going on at the schools, invite us to events. We love to participate and show our support for the students and families in our community. So with that, we'll take a picture to, for everyone. Our next recognition is a special one to J.C. Schillen for her service on the Environmental Commission. I was actually so surprised when I heard this because, to me, you're just such an integral part of serving as a commissioner, and you've done such an incredible job on the programming, at the meetings, and just really being present is what I love, you know? I don't wa- get to watch all the Environmental Commission meetings, but every event, you're there and such an active participant in the community, and that it'll, it's going to be a big void to fill. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you've done, and it's really like a legacy you've created on the Environmental Commission. So I will turn to my colleagues, but I wanted to say thank you. Peter?
J.C., we're going to miss you, but we're not because you're still here and you're still so active and involved in our community, and we know we're going to see you at many city council meetings. And, you know, I too was really shocked that you weren't able to continue, but I want to share with the community, the reason that she can't continue is because she's just so busy with other appointments. If you don't know this yet, the end of last year, J.C. was appointed to the North Santa Monica Bay Watershed Area Steering Committee. So she serves our community at the county level now, and I can only imagine how thin your spread, and we really appreciate what you've done here for the city, and we appreciate the good things that you're going to do for our county and our local area in the future. So we expect to see you around. Don't disappear, we know where to find you.
James? James?
Yes, I was going to say much along the same lines, and I was surprised too, and but I do know that you, I'm sure we'll see you everywhere, just like you've always been, and volunteering and helping out and participating. It is kind of a sad departure, but like I said, I know we'll see you in the community, and we've definitely benefited from your presence over the years, so thank you for your service.
David, and then Ed?
Thank you. I'll just join everyone in saying, yes, I was surprised. I asked Peter earlier and found out exactly the answer, but I'm grateful, and we all are for all your hard work and efforts and your passion. I mean, the pleasure of watching you inspire and work with and celebrate youth was consistent throughout all your years of service on that commission, and the members of Environmental Commission, youth members, all appreciate it, and it means a lot to them and goes on forever. You're always going to be at events, you'll still be at Earth Day and Arbor Day, and you'll come probably applaud or take pictures at this point for the calendars too. So thanks for all you've done, and I know you'll continue to do great things and be involved.
Ed?
J.C., I don't know you as well as others for a length of time, but I know your DNA, and it didn't surprise me that, well, it surprised me that you decided to step down, but it didn't surprise me that it was for a bigger level. And I know you're being the leader you are, you're going to rub that leadership quality off on the people that you help and work with, so look forward to hearing good things, and I hope our friendship continues.
Thank you. I have one speaker card. If there's anybody else who wants to speak, please fill out a speaker card, and with that, I will call up Joe Choco.
Hi, good evening. I am Joe Choco, I'm a longtime resident. And before I make my comments about J.C., I just wanted to mention that the PFC, PFA people were all ladies, and Mother's Day is coming up, so I would like to thank you all for being mothers to our schools. Thank you very much, it's very much appreciated. Now on to J.C. I know J.C. from working together on the Calabasas Coalition for the past forty years. Maybe it just feels that way. I know what she's capable of. She's a doer, not a talker. She knows how to get things done and what it takes to get something done. She has the unique ability to focus in on what's important and stay on course through to completion. J.C. took on her role as an environmental commissioner, and she's made a big contribution during her tenure. Too many to recite all here because I only get three minutes. I know how difficult it is to find volunteers of her caliber. Commissioners, of course, are volunteers. In fact, we're the only ones working on behalf of the city who are paid less than city council members. Clearly, none of us are in it for the money. We're here because we have something to contribute, and you agree that that has value because you appointed us. I know the city council is looking at ways to engage the commissioners that offer greater opportunities to contribute. I encourage you to do so. Volunteer commissioners are a valuable resource that should be retained and recognized. And to J.C., I'd like to say thanks for stepping up and making a difference. You deserve to be recognized. See you tomorrow at the Coalition Zoom.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Can I speak?
Yes, you can.
Okay, tonight you have to hear me.
Thank you all so much. I have a short set of comments to make, so don't play the, play me off with the orchestra. Anyway, thank you for taking the time to recognize me. I've always felt great support from everyone on the city council, so it means a lot that you're doing this tonight, taking time out of your normal meeting. To Mayor Pro Tem Peter Kraut, thank you especially for appointing me and for trusting me with this role. It means a lot. It always has, from the minute you did it till right now. I want to thank my fellow commissioners, Larissa Byrne, Beth Jagtani, Whitney Schwartz, David Cohen, Anne David Cohen. It was great serving alongside them. I also must thank my friends, fellow community members, and leadership of the Calabasas Coalition right here beside me, as they always are when I need them. Thank you so much. In my three and a half years on the commission, I was also the vice chair and the chair. When it started, we were a hundred percent virtual, and as we came through our COVID era, we eventually made it into your big chairs, which was kind of cool after all that time. Over that time, I spent many hours and provided my expertise and dedication to the commission on so many events and initiatives, all while serving under three different public, Public Works Department chiefs and longtime liaison Alex Ferrazotti, who has retired. So it has been quite a time from the beginning until now. As I depart, I ask you to continue to support the dedicated members that volunteer, the dedicated community members that volunteer as our city commissioners. Please support increasing meeting opportunities within the commissions, and please reinforce the importance of staff collaboration. As you all know, and many of you said, I am still very active here in the City of Calabasas with the Calabasas Coalition, the North Santa Monica Bay WASC, and I'm always keeping an eye on city initiatives. So I'm not going anywhere, and you will see me around. I'm also still open to serving the city. That hasn't changed. And if you see something, feel free to reach out and ask me, and I'm happy to talk it over. So again, thank you for this, it means a lot more than I can say, and thank you.
Don't go anywhere. J.C., we're going, J.C., we're going to come down and take a picture with you.
Oh, pictures.
Next, next up is our Sheriff's Crime Report for March twenty twenty-four, and we have Deputy Di Matteo to make, to make the report.
Good evening. I am Deputy Di Matteo, the Lawcell Sheriff's Station. I have the crime report for March twenty twenty-four. And before I get started, this doesn't apply to March, this applies to two days ago. On Monday night, deputies received a call of individuals in a backyard of a residence in Agora County area. The residents were home at the time when they heard a window shatter, so they called nine-one-one. Deputies responded and apprehended three individuals who were attempting to burglarize the house. So these were members of a South American theft group, so I'm hoping that the arrest of these individuals will put a dent in the crime in Calabasas. That being said, we do have on this report one rape. However, that was a clerical error, so I'm working on getting that fixed and getting resubmitted to the city manager's office. That incident took place in Agora Hills. We did have three assaults and four residential burglaries and one burglary to a business. We did have five grand theft incidents, six vehicle burglaries, and zero thefts from unlocked vehicle, which is great. I think that's the first report I've done all year, including last year, that's had that. So people are locking their cars. Three petty theft incidents, two stolen cars, and one arson. This arson took place in the, or near the intersection of De Berry Lane or De Berry Drive and Dante's View Drive. The suspect flicked a lit cigarette in a dry brush, recklessly causing a fire to about a half acre of land. That individual sustained burns and was treated at the hospital and also cited for arson. That's all I have for this report. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Any comments or questions? Ed? I'll start this way.
Thank you for the report. Thank you for your diligence every single day, every single hour. It's amazing. For a city our size, there's always something happening, and your city council is working as hard as possible to try to support Sheriff's Department and safety in our community as hard as we can. It's a never-ending process. Every time I get an alert on the phone, it's, it's something new, it's something a little different. To stay ahead of it, it's a real challenge, but thank you for all the intensity that you give to the city.
Thank you.
David?
Also, thank you, and thank everybody at the station for everything they do for our community. I was just going to ask, obviously, it's wonderful there were no thefts from unlocked vehicles to report. Since school's getting out soon and we're in summertime, what recommendations might you have for residents, either home or out and about, to keep themselves safe? Just reminders as much as anything.
Yeah, lock your houses, set your alarms if you have them, simply lock your windows and doors, it goes a long way. If you're going to be gone for an extended period of time, you can always let me know, and I can do vacation checks on your house. I can periodically drive by your house, it's a law enforcement presence, and can make sure that everything's, appears to be in, in good order. And don't really advertise the fact that you're going to be gone for an extended period because that just gives people on the internet a chance to go to your house and do some stupid stuff, so.
So avoid posting those photos on social media to your back? Okay.
And also, one more thing, this is a big thing, I get, I'm getting calls from a lot of HOAs, not just in Calabasas, but all the adjoining cities. If your child has an electric motorcycle, got to, got to have a driver's license to drive that. It's a big thing, see it all over the place. If your kid does not have a driver's license, he cannot ride those motorcycles. If it has pedals on it, that's the rule of thumb. If it's got pedals, they're good to go. If it doesn't, it's a motorcycle, you have to have a special license for that, okay? So we do, our traffic office has been made aware of this issue, and they're going to start having motor deputies pay attention to that, so. Got an electric motorcycle, got to have a driver's license.
Thank you very much.
Peter, and then James?
Got to have a motorcycle license.
Yes.
Just to be clear. No, I have no other questions tonight, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
James?
I have a few. First of all, I'm not getting into any details. Can you double-check on the arson because I believe that was started outside the city limits? And if so, I'd like that taken off our stats. On the noteworthy incidents, you know, I appreciate that now we're getting a little synopsis of a few of these. I think what I just ask is that whoever's doing this, and I don't know if it's a temporary person or not, you know, the residents are a lot more interested in the details of some of these sophisticated residential burglaries and less interested in shoplifting from a convenience store. I mean, not that that's not important to the shop owner, but it's, it's just not that significant if we're only going to do a paragraph on, on the highlights. So if we could concentrate on the more serious crimes, I'd appreciate it. Then I have two questions for you. One is, on the total Part One crimes, seems like it's, it's kind of going up a little bit from last year. Is it too early to know if that's a trend, or was that starting la- toward the end of last year?
Yeah, it's, it's too early to tell. And also, if you notice, they took away the percentages on these reports. I'm not sure whose call that was. It wasn't mine, but I would like to see that back on the reports, so it's also something that's being discussed.
That's true. I guess it's, it's, well, there is a percent change, so we do, is that, is that, that is a percent, isn't it?
Yeah, correct.
Or is that just a number?
So the percent change, so it's, it's basically a plus minus, but it's just a total number of crimes, not a percentage.
Okay. Then, I don't normally ask about this, but looking at the citation summary, I noticed that we are way down on traffic citations. And I, and now unfortunately, I wish I could report that in my own observations, we're down on traffic violations, but I'm just wondering about that. What is, is there a reason why we're down on traffic citations?
I don't know the reason, but you do have a new motor, I believe. I don't know if you guys have met him yet, Deputy Gervais, Sean Gervais. He's starting Calabasas, I believe, now, so expect those to go up.
Okay. It's not that I expect, you know, need the people to get cited for nothing, but we do have some ongoing problems in certain areas with speeding, reckless driving, you know, that goes beyond just discourteous driving, and I, I would hope that we're continuing to ticket those people.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so deputies that work the field, right, they're available for calls for service at all times, so in the event that they're not busy with calls for service, then their attention focuses to traffic enforcement. With the limited number of deputies in the field that we have, so traffic citations are, are down, and most of our efforts have been put forth towards burglary suppression and crimes like that. So yes, we do have a motor back, expect traffic citations to go up, but it's just, that's just the trend right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for everything that you do each and every day. Also, I've heard from a lot of people just this week and last week that they started seeing more motorcycle deputies.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, and someone sent me a message just saying, thank you so much for the increased presence, so people really appreciate seeing people, deputies.
Just, just so the public knows, like, a motorcycle deputy's job is to enforce traffic laws. So if you get pulled over by a motorcycle deputy, you're probably going to get a ticket. If you get pulled over by somebody, a deputy in a car, such as myself, that's not my job. I'm not there to give you a ticket. However, if I do something, do observe something egregious, I will stop and figure out what's going on, so. Just be a little bit more careful on the streets and watch out for the motorcycle deputies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a fire department update.
Good evening. My name's Battalion Chief Michael Velazquez. I'm here, local battalion chief. Unfortunately, Drew Smith could not make it this evening. Last minute meeting with executive staff, so he asked me to present. Unfortunately, I do not have any statistics, this is last minute, but I can comment nothing abnormal, unusual on the fire side within the city the last month or last couple of weeks. I am aware of the arson fire, and it is outside the city limits, and I would comment on that is, so the grass is curing, right, but the fuel moisture in the brush is very, very high, so the chance of a threat of any large fire growth or brush fire within the city limits right now is very low. I don't see that happening until maybe in August. So we're good on the fire side and brush wise, okay? Couple things you wanted me to share with you. First is, May, May first, we start our yearly defense space inspections in the city of Calabasas. So you will see our personnel out daily, doing inspections around the homes. We understand the grass is still growing, so we instructed our personnel to start on the, all the structures are at low, low risk, and knock those out first and do inspections. And towards the end of June, we'll start inspecting the homes, have more complexity to it, more acres, more land, and help them. And our main priority is out there to educate the citizens, out there and educate them on what we can do to help them, what the state's looking for in the inspections, and just identify any values at risk or vulnerabilities to our homes and businesses. So we'll be doing that in just a couple of months. Also, and we want to point out, last year you guys bought the fire department ten iPads. The men and ladies in the field appreciate it. The men and ladies in the field appreciate it, it really helps them with their job, and I wanted to share that with you guys, so you guys know. And also, lastly, snake, the snakes are coming out. Our call volume for rattlesnakes have gone up tremendously in the last two weeks, so please educate the citizens that the snakes are out there. They can call us, we will take the snake away, but eventually the snake will go away. If it's outside, give it time, but if they feel threatened, please call 911, we're out there to help. And the family, the fire family's doing well, we appreciate your support, City Calabasas, and in the report, do you have any questions for me?
That was a great positive report, so, thank you.
Oh yeah, no, thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Now we're gonna move on to council announcements. I will start with Mayor Protem Krouw.
Couple of announcements tonight. I wanna start by sharing some great news. I got to go to a birthday party today. It was a 100-year celebration for Shirley Mayer, who lives here in the city of Calabasas. So it was great to see so many people out for that birthday party, and it was great to be able to show up and represent our city and acknowledge her fantastic milestone there. Coming up in the near future here, I did wanna share as well that the Las Virginas Creek hike, Las Virginas Creek walking tour is going to be this Saturday from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00, meeting at the Lower gazebo across from De Anza Park. So anybody who's interested, come out and join us for a walk. I do have a couple of other announcements here, but I think I'm gonna defer to my fellow council members to make the Chamber of Commerce announcements.
Okay, Ed?
Speaking of the Chamber of Commerce, we did have a good bowling night. It was a lot of fun. We've done, this is our second year, and although we came in second place, it's a great relationship the city has with the residents, and I can't tell you, it went on for a good three hours, back and forth, back and forth, so we're gonna, Erica with her enthusiasm was part of our team, and we're gonna warm up next year a week or two in advance, give 'em hell. Just a few announcements, picking about Las Virginas Creek, there is a cleanup that same Saturday, June 1st, from 9:00 to 11:00, to keep the water flowing, and there's a lot of work being done on that creek, and I think it'd be nice to familiarize yourself with it, it's a great walk, especially if you have a dog, it's a very enjoyable morning. And then, we also have a safety fair, be called Be Prepared for Safety, sponsored by Assemblywoman Jackie Erwin and Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. It's on June 8th at our new Calabasas Community Center. Safety booths covering not just public safety in a sense with police and sheriff, but earthquake fires, floods, and CPR, medical issues, so they have it every year, but now that the center is up and running, it's gonna be great to enjoy that location again. Those are my announcements.
Thank you. David?
Thanks. I'll just quickly jump in and thank the chamber again, and thank Erica, Rain, Ed, who, we were four, and I tried to tag out at the very end to bring in somebody to finish the bowling tournament, but it was a lot of fun. We had signs, we had cheering squads, it was just a lot of fun, and the money raised goes for educational grants, so the chamber did an amazing job, and thank you to Erica, Rain, Ed, it was a lot of fun. Also wanna thank the chamber for putting on, along with the city in conjunction, the annual Law Day on May 1st, providing free legal services to the community, and wanna also acknowledge that former, well, current council member, James Bizagian was there, former council member Fred Gaines, myself and others provided free legal service, and I have gotten more comments this year, or people stopping me, who I don't know, thanking us and the chamber for putting this on this year. They really appreciate it, said they got a lot of helpful information, and they've been waiting to just get, to talk to someone to get the real truth, so wonderful day. I don't know if anybody's mentioned this, if I'm missing it, wanna say, great job to staff on the opening of the pool, the tennis and swim center, which was, and it is great. If you haven't been there, go take, go swim, go enjoy the new lounge furniture and all the amenities there. And last but not least, it's been mentioned, but the most important people and most important persons, we would not be here without this Sunday is Mother's Day, so happy Mother's Day and lots of love to all of you, especially my mom, I'm sure she'll watch this sometime. Thank you.
James?
Yes, I have two happy announcements and one that's not so happy. So I'll go with the happy ones first. The 25th Annual Calabasas Wine Tasting and Silent Auction is coming up on Friday, May 17th, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Calabasas Civic Center Plaza out here, sponsored by the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. It's a great event, one of their premier events all year, and I see the CEO out there, so hopefully, if you can, please buy a ticket to support your local businesses and come and enjoy it. I wanted to thank the Rotary Club of Calabasas for inviting me to their luncheon and their meeting this week, earlier this week. It was great to reconnect, I had not been there in quite some time, and so those are my happy announcements. And then I have something I would like to say, if the mayor would just indulge me for just a few moments. A couple of weeks ago, we were here and we commemorated the memory of those who had suffered genocides, holocausts, it was Holocaust Jewish Awareness Month, I called various names, and, you know, we all had some uplifting messages and some other messages about what's going on in the country. And in the last two weeks since that, it's gotten so much worse, and it is appalling to me to see our institutions of higher learning, especially, be run down and destroyed and besmirked by what's going on over there. I am, as someone who was for 22 years on a union board and union president of a major public agency, I have a great respect for dissent, and for protesting, and for expressing alternate points of view, but that is not what's going on at our universities. What's going on there is vagrancy, vandalism, racism, anti-Semitism. It is not a form of legitimate expression to tear down American flags and put foreign flags up on public institutions. It is not a form of legitimate discourse to make people feel uncomfortable and unwelcome because of their race and religion and their ethnicity, and to call them out, to harm them in various ways, and to make them feel like they can't attend classes. It is not a legitimate form of expression to deface the universities with graffiti, including swastikas and other hateful symbols. And I am just very sad, particularly as someone who attended both UCLA and USC, to see those universities as well, and to see the administration there and the faculty not only not do anything, but to encourage and participate in some of those activities. So thank you for indulging me, but I did feel I needed to say that. One final thing, I hope, it's a little bit late for this year, that when school convenes next year, that there's a whole different mindset, and that when these things start happening, we don't just accommodate it and make people go away from the university because they feel their safety's in jeopardy, but that it's clamped down on and people are removed from the university when it happens. Thank you.
Thanks, James. I'll add on to that, 'cause I was gonna speak to it, and then I'll give my announcements. Two weeks ago on Sunday, I went to UCLA as an alumni to go support the students there that were being harassed and to show solidarity, and when I got on campus, I could not believe what I was seeing. The entire campus had been taken over, from walking to the parking garage to where we need to go, the area was completely roped off by students who were not allowing other students who didn't share their beliefs to get through. And not only were these areas blocked off, they're screaming anti-Semitic and hateful things, and this was going on during the whole time, they took down, or they didn't take down a flag, they erected a Palestinian, a Palestinian flag on top of a public university. The only flag that should be up at UCLA is a State of California or a UCLA flag. The administration has done absolutely nothing. Elected officials in the state of California have done absolutely nothing. I reached out to every elected official in office right now who had gone to UCLA, and the only people who are bold enough to speak up are sitting on this dais, former Bruins and council members. People are afraid to speak up, that anti-Semitism is rampant, and it's not just against Jewish people, it's people who share Western values. Students are truly afraid to be there, the chancellor will not do anything, the police, the head of police for UCLA was watching the Dodger game. I had made a request through one of our other local elected officials, why there was no greater law enforcement, and the response, people should be losing their jobs. I mean, the lack of security and what has been allowed to happen is truly a disgrace, and we have so many residents in our community attending UCLA. These students have wanted to come home, their midterms are now on Zoom, people are afraid, and this is all happening in our backyard, and everyone should be speaking up against this, because right now, they're attacking the Jewish students, the next day it's gonna be another group, and we all need to be very outspoken and demand change at these universities, and it's not just UCLA, it's universities across the country. But since UCLA is in our backyard, and there's three alumni sitting on this dais, I think it's imperative that we continue to speak up and express our outrage about that, because it is really disgraceful, the harm that is being done to the people at that university. So I know David wanted to comment on that, and then I'll go back to my announcements really quickly.
I'll just add on quickly, we, as James mentioned, we talked about this, and it isn't the first time, it isn't the second, unfortunately, I don't think it'll be the last, but now we're talking about the educational institutions, especially UC and USC, which is very important to a lot of our residents. It just should not be happening. Students should be allowed to go to, not allowed, encouraged to go to class, to go to study, to go to school without this type of hate, and without the type of fear that is going on, and the violence. And I know you were there, I did not go that day for multiple reasons, but it isn't just students doing this. These are non-students, these are people involved in these protests that are specifically targeting and involved, trying to create a situation which brings more press, which brings more fear, which does a lot of things that is not positive, that does not set forth their goals allegedly or their values. It's about creating a climate affair, and it's not just here, it's all universities, we saw UCI a couple days ago, UC San Diego just had this occur as well, and we have friends, acquaintances who had to shelter in place in another country, in Greece, because there were groups going, looking, targeting to actually find someone who was, at that point, Jewish and actually put them to death. So this is not something that is just going on, but the fact that it's going on in our schools here and our educational institutions, as James said, as Alicia said, as we've all said before, need to step up and put a stop to it. If it's hate of any kind, it doesn't matter, it's not, should not be allowed, shouldn't be allowed for one minute, so that's it, thank you.
Well, commemorate, being as an inclusive community as we are, I wanna recognize that May is the time to celebrate the important role that Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have played in our shared history as we commemorate a PI month, and our library has a display both in the adult reading section and the children's section of authors who speak to the successes and the histories of their stories. So if you have the opportunity, please check out our library on this. And another event happening this weekend is at De Anza Park. It is a free event to kick off Mother's Day weekend, and it is called A Groovy Afternoon, and information is on our website, but it's Saturday, May 11th, from 2:00 to 4:00, and registration is not required, and I think it'll be a great event, so definitely check that out. Let's see, now we're moving on to speaker cards, oral communication. I have one card from Lisa Clayton, from the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Lisa Clayton, I'm the president and CEO of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Our usual representative is not here, so I am filling in, giving the chamber update. First, I would like to say thank you to the city of Calabasas for your consistent and generous support over the years. It is an exciting time for the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. We are busier than ever and growing. Since the beginning of the year, we had 16 new members join us. We've held over 33 events and meetings, and as you know, co-hosted the inaugural International Women's Day event with multiple cities. I just walked over here from our Calabasas Women's Group event at the Anza Hotel. This group started a year ago with eight women. Tonight, we had over 30 attendees, they're probably still over there. The topic was smart money moves for smart women. And as was mentioned, April 26th, we had our annual Cal Cup Bowling Tournament at Pinstripes. Thank you to the Calabas, the Calabasas Kingpins for bringing a strong game, runner-ups, council members Albrecht and Shapiro, and community services director Erica, you represented the city extremely well. Our recent Law Day that we held on May 1st was the largest and most successful to date. Thank you to council members Shapiro and Bizagian for your contributions to the event. The Calabasas Chamber has been working on another event, our Luncheon Learn in conjunction with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and their newly-formed Organized Retail Crime Task Force. Thank you to Mayor Protem Krouw for making it happen. The event is scheduled for June 6th, right here at Founder's Hall. The mission of the Calabasas Chamber is to support our businesses. Over the last month, we have been assisting our chamber member Cadillac of Calabasas on their grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony, which is going to take place on June 25th. Save the date. Lastly, we are thrilled to again have Cadillac of Calabasas, as well as the city of Calabasas, as our elite sponsors for the 25th Annual Calabasas Wine Tasting and Silent Auction happening on Friday, May 17th, right here on the beautiful Civic Center Plaza. Again, we appreciate the city's support, which helps the Calabasas Chamber continue to put on these longstanding events, as well as providing assistance to our business community and our chamber members. We look forward to seeing you on May 17th.
Thanks, Lisa, for everything you guys are doing. Now we're gonna move on to our consent items. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
Just for a clarification, number three, please.
I have some questions on four.
Three and four?
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with item three.
Okay, my question is very clear, it's just a brief clarification of the increase in the contract, and the question is, how are the funds being paid? And I know we have it in the report, but just to clarify for the public, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. This contract is entirely funded by propositions A and C, which come from LA Metro, LA Metro. There are no general funds used for this contract.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Questions on item number four?
Yes, two questions. First, on the item, on the part where it designates the city manager, assistant city manager, and deputy city manager as authorizing agents, there's no delineation as to what, as to how that's triggered, like, does that mean that any one of them can act at any time? Or if the city manager's not here, then it goes down to the assistant city manager, and then it goes to the deputy city manager? Because it isn't clear from what I read.
The second is correct, where it's the delineation of the authority in the absence of one or the other.
Okay, is that, should that not be written out, or?
For CALOES, they don't need that, that is internally through our emergency operation plan, that's in a separate document.
Okay, the second question is about the council members. So I saw three council members listed, which is unusual, usually there's only two, and I just wondered, was there, I mean, is there, what are council members listed at all for on that, something like that?
So this form is from CALOES, and so it lists the three lines, and when Mike Dyer prepared that form, he put the mayor and the Mayor Protem, and then he added Councilman Shapiro, just because he's part of the Public Safety Task Force.
Okay.
And that was, that was the reason is, as he put that together.
Oh, okay. Is that like a standard form?
This is CALOES, this is CALOES's form.
It's a standard state form. And I'll add that our records will reflect if this is adopted, that it was all, would be all five council members.
Oh, you're allowed, okay, that is another question on that. So are we allowed to do that, where all five are on there? Like, we don't have to do two or one or something like that?
So the CALOES form just has three slots. But our records would reflect that the approval of it would be all five. And this is, that listing of the council members' names is not limiting any role of the other three. It's just listing the certification. The designated agents are the CM, the ACM.
The form's a little confusing, because I know it's a one-size-fits-all.
Right.
What we'll do, Councilman, is if we can manipulate or change the form, add rows there, we will add the other two council members, so it's the full council.
It's fine. I wasn't, because I was thinking maybe also is for, if it's used in general, that maybe it's for cities with a lot of council members, where it's not a majority that's on there. But that's, that's fine. Either way is fine. If you're saying that this is just a form, a basic form, but it's understood that everybody, that's fine with me.
Correct. There's no differentiation among the council in terms of power.
That was it.
Okay, with all those questions answered, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent items are approved. Now we're going to move on to new business. Item number seven is the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1898, Resolution of Intention to Approve an Amendment to the Contract Between the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement System, and the City of Calabasas. And Ron Allers is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight is a Resolution of Intention to amend the California Public Employees Retirement Contract to allow for the merger of the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center into the City of Calabasas Plan. On the second page of the report, I'll refer you to the costs that are listed here. The change in the actuarial accrued liability is $1,766,405. The change in our normal cost is 0%, so no change. Our change in the total unfunded accrued liability payment is $72,370. That is all for the classic miscellaneous plan. For the new miscellaneous plan, the changes are in the accrued liability, $1,668. No change in the total normal cost. And the change in the total unfunded accrued liability payment is $126. This is, we're going through a multi-step process to allow for this merger. This is the first step in the merger process to change our contract with CalPERS. After this, we will have the ordinance for introduction. There needs to be a 20-day waiting period between the approval of this Resolution of Intention, minimum 20-day waiting period between the Resolution of Intention and the approval of the ordinance. So we will be coming back on June 12th, council meeting, to have an approval of an emergency ordinance at that point, so we can allow for this merger to take effect on June 30th, right before, or right at the end of the fiscal year. So with that, I am available for any questions regarding the Resolution of Intention that you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ron? I don't have any speaker cards. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1898?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Ed's for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Ron. Our next item is Ordinance Number 2024-403, Authorizing an Amendment to the Contract Between the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement System, and the City of Calabasas. And Ron will make this presentation as well.
Thank you, mayor. So this is an ordinance first reading to amend our contract with CalPERS. If you'll indulge me, I'm going to read the costs again so that we're on record publicly with these costs and in compliance with state law. So our classic miscellaneous plan, the change in the actuarial accrued liability is $1,766,405. No change in our total normal cost. Our total unfunded accrued liability payment is $72,370. For the new miscellaneous plan, the change in the actuarial accrued liability is $1,666,668, excuse me. No change in our total normal cost and $126 for the change in the total UAL payment. This is a normal ordinance. For the council, this is the first reading. This, in effect, is a, it's going to go through the normal ordinance procedure and be kind of a backstop, if you will, in case our urgency ordinance with the council will hear and vote on on June 12th would ever be contested. So if we approve this ordinance on June 12th as well, then this ordinance will take effect 30 days afterwards, which is roughly July 11th. And we'll have two ordinances that are basically affecting the same item, which is the amendment to the CalPERS contract to allow for the merger, the community center into the City of Calabasas Plan. And with that, I am available for any questions that you may have on this first reading of the ordinance.
Are there any questions? So what action do we need to take?
So the action here is to vote to introduce this ordinance.
So is there?
But after any public comment and/or question.
No public comment on this item. And Peter, you have a question?
Yeah, I just think it's important, if you could, could you state for the public, why are we taking on this action here? I think it's important that we clarify that as we move forward.
Yes, Councilmember Kraut. So this is the action of merging the 16 former employees of the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center into the City of Calabasas CalPERS Plan. So those 16 former employees keep their retirement benefits. They keep what they have earned so far with those, with CalPERS. And the City of Calabasas is absorbing those costs and will be making those payments in the future annually so that these employees remain, our former employees, remain whole in what they have heard, earned. In effect, they will, there will be no difference between the former employees of the community center and City of Calabasas. They will be treated just like a City of Calabasas employee if they would have worked for us during that time.
And the primary purpose behind that decision is to facilitate, as is the next item, the land transfer. The city, the transfer of the half of the community center owned by the City of Agoura Hills, their transfer to the City of Calabasas of that half. The price tag, if you will, is that the city take on this PERS debt, which otherwise is split between the two cities. So this is the way to solve the problem for the former employees and get full ownership of the community center as the Calabasas Community Center. And that was the next item.
Thank you for the full and complete explanation.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up is our updated calendar of events.
Oh, Madam Mayor, there is. Item nine.
No, sorry. Sorry. Okay, yes, sorry. We're back to item, Approval of Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center Transfer Agreement Between the Cities of Agoura Hills and Calabasas for the Community Center. And Ron, Matt's going to make the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item, as I introduced, is the third of the three pieces of the puzzle tonight. This is the land transfer agreement between the City of Agoura Hills and the City of Calabasas regarding the community center. And the gist of the agreement is that in return for Calabasas taking on the PERS debt, as just discussed and has just begun, Agoura Hills will transfer its half interest in the land to Calabasas. The Calabasas will accept and maintain the two deed restrictions that are in place on the land from the original county and state grants of money by which the two cities bought the land. Those are, number one, that residents of Calabasas, Agoura Hills, and the unincorporated county area all be treated equal access. That will be maintained. And second, the land continued to be used for public recreational purposes. That also will be maintained and is part of the land transfer agreement. This is on our agenda tonight. It is also on Agoura Hills's agenda tonight. It was later in their agenda, so I don't know if they've yet approved it, but the expectation is that they would. It was their last item. And with that, if the two cities approve the agreement, we'll get it signed. Then the next step will be to go to the county together and have the county consent to that transfer as the holder of that deed restriction. Then, once that's done, then the deeds get recorded. And that is delayed until after PERS approves the final PERS transfer as that other piece of the step. And that'll be managed through an ESCO process to be worked in through staff. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Matt?
Just so the public knows, Matt, thank you for the report. How long do you estimate all this will take? I know there are some loose ends with the county to be tied up. But can you estimate when that might be finally accomplished?
I would give an estimate of four to six months. And the range is dependent in part on when we can get on the county board supervisor's agenda. And we'll keep the council and the community apprised as we go through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center Transfer Agreement? Is there a second?
I'll second that. Do we want to include the second item as well?
Yes.
And yet there was a second motion as well.
And Mayor, if I could, on this item, we did notice one typo after printing. And that is with the city clerk is still listing Mari as the city clerk. So if we could amend that motion to include that modification to that certificate of acceptance.
If I could just, I'll summarize that. To amend the motion, the second course of action is to direct the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to execute the final Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center Transfer Agreement between the cities of Agoura Hills and Calabasas for the community center with any non-substantive changes as may be needed, and to take all necessary actions to implement these approvals.
Great. So motion second? Motion? You accept it?
I accept it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that item is approved.
Thank you. We'll keep you posted as we move through the steps.
And thank you to everyone who worked so hard on this item. We are almost there. Almost there. Now we are going to move on to item number 10, which is an update on our calendar of events. And Erica Green and Amy and Wana are here to make the presentation.
Thank you, mayor, city council, members of the public. So we are here to, we brought back the calendar of events. Last time we were here on March 27th, we had a list of events that we were going to propose and do for the 24-year, 2024 year. And we wanted to come back and update you with some requests. So. So in March, like I said, the proposed 2024 calendar of events was presented to the city council by staff. Upon review, the council had no choice but to cancel the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular event due to the Los Virginist Unified School District denying use of their facilities and city venue limitations. Instead, it was opted to allocate the funding towards new events and improve existing ones. So here again is another list of our annual citywide special events, which we hope to grow with your approval tonight, which is the Bunny Trail Egg Hunt, Fourth of July Spectacular, the Lakeside Fun Run and Splash Party, no longer the fireworks and festival, summer concert series, dive-in movies, pumpkin festival, and a holiday event. So our 2024 budget for special events is $405,500. And the proposed allocation of the Fourth of July funds was $88,400. So here are our recommendations to allocate that funding. Some of the events we will enhance and some are new. So the Fourth of July Splash Party enhancement at $3,500. A pumpkin festival bake-off event, $10,000. An escape room event at $10,000. Poetry and open-mic nights at the amphitheater, four of those events for $4,000. Holiday movies at the community center for $5,000. Annual pumpkin festival enhancements at $5,000. Annual holiday event enhancements at $15,000. Partnership with Something Yellow to host a 5K for the cities, $25,000. Grand openings at $6,000. And a teen night trading post on Food Truck Thursdays at $5,000. This sheet is the listing of special events that we are looking to host for 2024. The green lines are those that have already occurred. The pink is new events for the year. And the orange color is partnerships that the city assists with partner special events. So with that, that ends my presentation. If there's any questions on the events?
I'll start with James.
Yes. I did want to mention one thing, because as part of your report, you're asking for feedback on some of the funds for Fourth of July. We do have some funds available now that we're not doing the fireworks show. And I just want to tell the council that in the 1990s, the council did direct that the summer splash party be free and open to the public. It was like one of our only events that was the case. And last year, that was not, that did not happen. I knew you made a decision not to do that with the staff. I, especially in light of the fact that, first of all, we're eliminating the fireworks component, so we're not doing that. We have that extra money. And secondly, we really don't, I mean, we're only charging a few dollars to get in. It seems more cumbersome than it's worth. I'd like to go back to what we had had before and to have a free and open event at the summer splash party. What's charged once you're in there, as far as food, other entertainment, whatever, is up to the staff. But I think we should, in the spirit of the Fourth of July, keep that one day that where we open up the tennis center to everybody. That's my comment. Well, actually, I did have one other one, excuse me. I continue to feel that the pumpkin festival should go back to two days. And I know you had some reasons why that didn't happen. If you could refresh my memory, I think it was something to do with the staffing of it. But I'm not, I'm not sure. Has anything changed with that?
No, it was both staffing and the actual budget amount. So staffing, we utilize all of our part-time staff, all of our full-time staff to staff the pumpkin festival for one day, in addition to city hall staffing. There's been such inflation to host that event. The budget allocation really only serves one day at this point. So if we were going to add another day, we'd have to allocate not another full $135,000, but about $80,000 to host a second day.
Is it possible to have, like what some other cities do, is have some event on the day before, like to kick it off? Like, I noticed you put in a baking contest or something?
Correct.
Which is new? So maybe that goes the night before? I mean, just something where we can make it, kind of build up the excitement? I mean, I don't want to scare you, but years ago, like 30 years ago, they did it all October, every Saturday and Sunday. Are you prepared for that?
Oh, no.
Okay. So if I hang that over your head. No, in actuality, in all candor, I think it's, it would help create some excitement. And it seems to me that if you did a nighttime event like that that is geared more toward older, you know, older children and also young adults, that would be a nice way to segue into the pumpkin festival. So those are my two comments. One on the Fourth of July, which I think we need to have consensus if we're going to do. And the other one is suggestions for you for the future regarding this. I'm excited, but I think that was Alicia's idea to do the baking contest, because there was a chili cook-off in Malibu. So I think that planted the seed a little bit. But that's a good, that's a good start to getting more broader age participation at the pumpkin festival. Thank you.
It's definitely not my idea. I mentioned the chili cook-off, but I don't want to take credit for anything that wasn't mine. I'm sure it was definitely staffed, but I'm excited for it. Peter?
Well, as long as we're mentioning ideas for the cook-off, I'd be in trouble if I got home tonight and I didn't share my wife's idea, which is that these cook-offs need to be tied to our neighborhoods so that it could be, you know, the Oaks versus Saratoga. And make sure that we give credit to where these people are coming from. And I think that might draw some more people into this competition. Just food for thought, and it wasn't my idea. In looking at the list of events, very excited to see all these. Two just simple comments that are going to be budget-related.
Sure.
The first thing is, is that we are looking at our budget in the next meeting. And this is one of our line items, is looking at where this money is going to be coming from. So I think we would all love So I think we would all love to triple this budget, but we don't have that right now. So we're exploring ways to find some more money, but we might be inching up to this a little bit at a time. Just a side note. One of the solutions, I think, comes in this color-coded chart. These sponsored events or partnered events, I think, are a great opportunity. You know, we don't have the wine tasting event on here because that's a chamber of commerce event, but we are sponsoring that. And there are other events that we do sponsor. And that's another great way, maybe to alleviate the work from staff and still have events that are open to the community, is to help other organizations put on events. And I love the idea of partnering with Something Yellow coming up here. They just, by the way, had their annual poker tournament fundraiser last week. I did participate. I was home by 7:30, so that tells you how well I did. But they're a fantastic organization right here in the city. There's many of them, so I would encourage you to keep exploring those things because that allows us to do more events for less budget.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Great. David?
And yes, we discussed this in the budget, and we're going to continue to. Just a note, on item number 12 shows the yellow, shows the chamber on there. So it is at least on the list. I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Protam Kraut's comments. Going to the list that you provide us for the Fourth of July, you just want our comments at this point, right?
Correct.
Unabashed? No, okay. The Fourth of July Splash Party enhancements, do you have any specifics as to what that might be?
Yes, we're going to add food vendors to that list and additional pool and booth games.
Okay. And how much is the cost referring to James's comments of the splash party that we, what do we take in?
The entry fee is $5.
And what do we bring in? What would it cost us to, in revenue sources not coming in, to go ahead and make that free for the public?
I don't think it's a huge amount of revenue, but we are looking to offset some of our costs. And adding another $3,500 to enhance it, it was just something we wanted to add a cost to. So, but we will definitely consider.
Okay, I would consider that as well, depending on what my colleagues want. I like the idea because we're, and I realize it's a cost, so we've got to talk about that for budget. Okay. The pumpkin festival bake-off sounds fun, whatever that is going to be. I guess I'll ask again, what do you have in mind for that, if you have something in mind?
Actually, if I could say, actually Mayor Protam Kraut, I think it was maybe last year or the year before, had an idea of how we would involve the neighborhoods. And I think then it was a chili cook-off. So when I spoke to Wana, our wonderful special events coordinator here, she thought, well, what else can we do besides chili cook-off so it's more related to pumpkin? So really what we want to do is have a pumpkin bake-off and include the HOAs and try and get the neighborhoods out, get a winner to those, and then have them at the pumpkin festival for taste testings and things like that. So that's kind of our idea. We still have to flush out a lot of these details, but that's where that came from.
But we could probably do it for a lot less than $10,000.
Depending on, yes, exactly. These are estimates, so if we save some funds somewhere, all the better.
And will Mayor Protam Kraut be baking? That's the big question.
Yes, yes. He makes an excellent pumpkin pie.
An escape room, which I know, we have one locally right here, or you're talking about creating one?
Creating one, yes.
It's a lot of fun. Poetry mic, open-mic nights at the amphitheater. I'm very supportive of using our amphitheater. The only comment I'll make on that, I've said for a number of years, I'd like to see the amphitheater have some upgrades, which is another cost, or something which would include at least lights and sound, so the sound and light would attract other, hopefully some impressive opportunities for the community. I'm very supportive of that. Pumpkin festival enhancements, that's small item. Holiday event enhancements, do we have any idea what that, you're looking at?
Yes, so we have been doing the Jolly Trolley, so Amy's team has been hosting that, but we wanted to make that a larger event. So last year, we had the toy drive kickoff. So the senior center combined a holiday event and the toy drive kickoff. So we just wanted to enhance that and make this more of an annual event. So do a holiday event each year instead of smaller events.
Great. And the grand openings anticipated for next year, the parks or other things?
Yes, so we're going to do probably another seven or eight ribbon cuttings, and I want to make a note about that. So the ribbon cuttings, I know we only list that it says ribbon cutting, but it actually will be a community event and a ribbon cutting. So Brandon's Village, Wild Walnut will be huge events for the community, so that's why the allocation is a little higher for those.
Great. And I am fully supportive, as you know, of the Something Yellow City of Calabasas partnership with a 5K. The only comment I'll make, and it may be, if it's not well-received or controversial, item number 14, Calabasas Cuisine Food Truck Thursdays, teen events, which is great. You have it down for 10 events from, or it's listed as 10 events from June to August. A lot of teens in the summer aren't necessarily around here, or they're working, or they're traveling. So is it possible that we could reduce that amount to maybe fund some of these other items? Five to eight events, depending on, you're talking about, again, graduation, some going off to college, some working, some traveling. So even doing it for a first time to have it every other week would seem to me to be something new for the city and great for youth. That's just a comment.
Sure, if I can clarify on that. So the teen portion won't be every night. So the food trucks are the 10 weeks because we're going to do those all throughout the summer. So it'll move throughout the city. So it'll be at tennis and swim, it'll be here at the civic center and at the community center. There'll be one or two of those Thursdays that will be dedicated to teens. So we will definitely work through those calendar dates to put those on.
I was just trying to find a way to maybe another $10,000 or $12,000 that we could use for some of these other items.
No council member, please don't take our money.
No, no, I'm taking it. Reallocate it. Okay, thank you.
Ed?
Erica, what a robust calendar of events. So you really pivoted beautifully because we were all kind of scratching our head when it came to the fireworks and what are we going to do to substitute it? And I've had really some great comments from our council, taken a lot to heart, and I really, Councilman Bozagian mentioned pre-pumpkin festival, and it would be nice to have something kind of like a warm-up, get people excited. But I look at the downside of it, because we're always looking at both sides. For the pumpkin festival, we have buses, and the shuttles bring people in. So as much as I'd love to see it and support it, I'm not sure if the cost factor is going to be in there because a large amount of people, even a third of the people that would come to the festival, even a quarter, would probably be pretty overwhelming. But some kind of warm-up would be really nice. I'm not sure what that exactly would be. And when I look at the list, you know, when we look back probably by, at the end of the year, it's so robust, there might be some events that were well-attended, over-well-attended, and some that were under-attended. So we can adjust that and maybe reduce some and add those, that capital to the ones that need it or create new ones. So I know it's not going to be a permanent list, but it's a beautiful catch-up. And then regarding the splash party, I didn't hear what you said as far as how much revenue that would bring in, and what would we have to subsidize that if it was going to be free?
Right, well, we usually get about, is it five? Yeah, yeah, about 200 to 300 people. So we're looking at five bucks a person.
How much?
$5 a person.
No, but how many people attended?
Two to 300 people.
So it's not a huge amount of money?
No, it's not a huge amount of money. But it is offsetting of some of the cost.
Trying to incorporate that into the 5K race or something where you could contest, you could obtain some kind of complimentary pass for your family. But anyway, I like the idea of the free splash party, that's something that would be unique for us. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, Amy, and Wana. It's really exciting to see this. I know the community is going to really appreciate these. I just had a few questions. For the pumpkin festival, I know the bake-off, we have a great new addition. Is there anything to involve, I think James was asking, teenagers, younger adults in the pumpkin festival? Because I know we've all talked about that people kind of age out of it, and it'd be great to bring people back.
Yeah, and I think that's why we allocated that additional 5,000. We're going to delve a little deeper into how we want to focus on that age group because I know that's one that's kind of lacking there. So that'll be what that 5,000 is geared toward, whether that be some sort of activity or carnival booth or however, but we will gear something towards that age group, definitely.
Because even if we aren't spending $10,000 on the, where is it? The bake-off? And had extra money just to like bring that new demographic back to the pumpkin festival, I think it would be great.
Yes.
Very excited about the 5K, teen night, everything. Let's see. And I think you mentioned it, but I wanted to re-mention that every time one of our parks opens, it's going to be a great event for the community.
Yes.
So we're gonna, Erica and I talked that when we message it out to the community, less emphasis on the ribbon cutting and more emphasis on a great event for the community to enjoy the new facilities. We can still cut the ribbon, we can still cut the ribbon, but it's really going to be another event. So whatever we have presented, it's plus every time we open a new park. Yeah, no, I just think as, for all of these events, and also, so the annual holiday event, so that's an event for the senior center, right?
No, 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 no. The toy drive started out as part of that, but then Kim took it on last year to make it more of a citywide event. So we want to enhance that. It's not a senior center event.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about the party, like the event after, like we all went to, like where we brought the toy. Am I thinking of something else?
The holiday cheer, yeah. That's a senior center event, yes.
So tell me, okay, so tell me, what is this annual holiday event?
So the past few years, we've been doing the Jolly Trolley just to do something in December, which is very cool, but we wanted to enhance that and make that a larger event. Last year, Kim took on that event and did a toy drive and the caricatures and did all these activities, and we want to enhance that. We want to make it an annual event, not just for the senior center, not just the Jolly Trolley. So that's the point, is we're going to go into detail of how we can make that an amazing annual holiday event for the community. So it'll be citywide.
Right, and I love the events that have, like, all the different age groups attend. I mean, and that happens very frequently here, and I think those are the best events that everyone in the community can enjoy them. So, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Well, at some point, I think we need to soon make a decision about the splash party because it's coming up.
So how can staff, Kindon and Erica, can you look at that and?
Yeah, I think I heard consensus from at least three that the council wants us to explore providing that opportunity at no cost to the community.
You'll have to have like a capacity, though, because the minute you say free, so I will leave that to staff, but any free event, we're probably going to get more people than we would.
But we've never had an overflow there. It was free for 25 years. Or more. Started in the mid-'90s.
Okay, well, you guys, you can figure that out, right?
We got it.
Okay. Okay, are there any further questions? Let's see. What, let's see, and there are no speaker cards? What is the action item on this?
No action, just wanted to get your feedback, so.
Perfect.
We got it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you guys for all the work on this one. Now I'm going to turn over to informational reports, the check register for the period of April 13 through 26. Are there any questions? Okay, now we'll go to task force reports. I'll start with Mayor Protam Kraut.
Really quick, JPA board meeting was held on April 25th. I was able to participate in that, and we saw the results of that in our three items this evening. The Headwaters Corner Task Force also met on May 2nd, and we'll have more to report on that later. And your budget subcommittee met yesterday, and will continue to be in again next week and on into your next budget presentation, which we expect to have here two weeks from tonight.
Thank you. James?
I don't accept. I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, the Open Space Task Force can have a meeting. Are we going to schedule one? Okay. Just the Open Space Initiative?
Got it, yes.
Just that one. That's the only thing.
David? Oh, sorry. Can I, I just want to congratulate David for his appointment as the chair for, no, tell me, no, 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 announce it.
I think he did, elected.
Elected as the chair.
SCAG CHD. It's a committee that will get to work primarily, among other things, on RENA numbers, which we all love.
So ours will be zero next year.
But it was a big deal, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Lots more meetings with coffee. Thank you. Peter already said, the budget committee, and especially in light of all these wonderful items we're looking at, we have to work hard and get around to magically come up with money for us. I attended the CPA meeting with Ed, and Ed took over on that, so I'll stop there. There's a lot to report on that. We all attended, if we haven't reported already, the Valley Economic Alliance Gala, or a number of us did, and it was really a well-done event, very nice. I attended last week the General Assembly for SCAG in the desert, and that's where I officially got that approved by the General Assembly, and it was a very good event, lots of things. I think I sent that to everybody to give you a short summary of what happened. And I do want to announce, for the first time ever, not the first time, I've been on scholarship committee along with about 12 others from all of Southern California we get to go through. This year was 114 applications, and we, SCAG awards nine student scholarships for the first time ever. The City of Calabasas and the COG here has a winner, and that is a very own member of the Mayor's Youth Council, and also Environmental Student Commissioner Navin Parmar received one of the scholarships. So congratulations, Dan. Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. Two short reports. One, I did meet with the CEO from the Valley Economic Alliance this morning. I wanted to get involved after being at their events and getting to know them. There is an opening. I serve as an alternate, so there's areas I can help serve them. Certainly, public-private collaboration in a lot of ways in the vitality and sustainability economic business in this region, so I'm excited about that, particularly serving with our mayor on economic development. I think they pair in very, very well. Clean Power Alliance, it's so exciting to see this group grow and grow. We all know how hot it is in the summer and worry about the sustainability of power. Well, they secured in the past year long-term contracts, almost 100% sustainable, wind and solar. Now they're working on long-term battery backups, so the reliability of when times are at the worst, we can depend on power from them at a reasonable price. So more to come. It's amazing how they're growing. They currently serve 3 million residents. Didn't mention, yeah, they did have a rate increase. It's a mild rate increase. It seems like this is something that's unavoidable. Every year, whether it's SCE, the water company, which they've also raised rates, but they've taken a very, very hard look at it, and the grid can only provide so much on the sustainable end, so we do have to have some renewable, but it's about 3%.
Thank you. I attended, along with some other council members, the ribbon cutting for Sweet Lady Jane. So that's an exciting new business that's reopening Calabasas. I also want to announce that Soleil Soups is opened in the Gilson Shopping Center, so lots of new businesses coming to Calabasas, that it's great for our residents and business community to get out and support. And I attended a bunch of other meetings, but a lot of them have already been mentioned, so thank you. And let's see, are there, does the city manager have anything to report?
Mayor, I do have several items. First of all, as the council is aware, Congresswoman Brownlee's office opened up their application process for their community grants or the community project appropriations. I do need to compliment our public work staff. We received notice of that on a Thursday, and by Monday, our public work staff had completed an application and submitted that. There's a lot of requirements that go with these project, the community project appropriations, and so there's several different categories, and we looked at all of them. Some we couldn't do just because of letters of support we needed from outside agencies or projects had to be identified in state transportation improvement programs. But kudos to our public works department, they were able They were able to put in an application for Phase 2 and Phase 3 of our Green Streets project. And so these are projects that are designed and, and ready to go, really those shovel-ready projects that just lack the funding. And so hopefully, cross our fingers, we'll give you good news on that. And stay tuned on that. A couple of other things I want to, in our, in our packet today was the investment report. I want to acknowledge Ron and the work he does on that with the investments for the city. It is by far probably one of the best investment programs of most cities. And kudos again to his diligence on that and how well he manages those investment funds for the city. As a matter of just information, Scott has been elected to serve on the Conejo Las Urginas Future Foundation Board of Trustees. He'll be serving with others from the community, and it's a great way for him to interact and, and also connect and provide information on what the city's doing in connection with that bigger base. Finally, this, this week, Community Service Department, Kim and Jennifer at the senior center hosted a reception, a lunch, to honor our volunteers at the senior center, our senior center volunteers. Heather and Itzel from Public Works helped out doing succulent baskets or with that event. And it was just fun to see the two departments come together. Seniors were really pleased about that. And then finally, as Lisa mentioned earlier in her comments, Scott and I had gone to the sheriff's presentations and day that they do for city managers in Cerritos earlier in March. And then Mayor Protem, I think you'd seen the same presentation with the LA County Sheriff's Retail Crime Task Force. And so after those two presentations, we've worked with the chamber, and they've been very helpful in finding a date that they can host LA County Sheriff's Department, or Task Force on retail crime. And we'll be having, hosting that, as Lisa mentioned, in June 6. And so that will be announced to the community, especially to our retailers, and we hope to bring in a big crowd to support that task force and the information that they have.
That'll be great. Are there any requests for future agenda items? I actually have a question, and I was, think, saw this earlier today. I know in terms of like lawn mowers, we were waiting for like the state. But I'm beginning to realize we're one of the only cities around who hasn't done anything yet. So I was just curious if you could, it doesn't have to be an agenda item, but I know like Westlake Village, Hidden Hills, and maybe some of the other cities have already transitioned. So I'm curious like about how gardeners and landscapers like charge their batteries. If you could just talk to the other city managers and find out how they actually enforce it and just get some information. Because I know we're waiting, but I think other cities are actually being proactive on it.
I thought the state acted to phase it out.
But we haven't done anything. Our own, but even our own city landscapers have.
Yeah, the state phase out hasn't kicked in yet. It comes, starts with a somewhat delayed lead-in period, starting January 1, I believe, with 25. But with the amortization period for existing equipment. Certainly, we can go ahead of it. Some cities, including others I work with, have robust regulations on this. So we can get some information.
Well, I just think it's going to be such a drastic change when it happens that we should see what the other cities are doing, start the education campaign, and especially, we should model with our own contractors if possible.
Yeah, and a lot of it is, it's education. It's also the utilities sometimes have had grants to help in the transition, but not so much for the commercial, but for the homeowners. So it's worth asking utilities if they have those grant programs still.
Right, and I have no idea how long the batteries last, like just the actual logistics of it. So just curious. I see Heather in the audience, so I'm sure she'll have feedback, so.
We'll work with staff to get some information on that and can also connect to the other cities.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions, comments? Well, with that, we will adjourn. Oh, David?
Do you mind? It's not really a future agenda item, but for everybody to know, and our council, I'm sure we know, tomorrow, the CPUC is voting on rate increases. And it's almost certain it's going to affect our community, among others. It's, it's a rate increase that's based upon not necessarily usage. So it's, it's kind of done a bypass to avoid, I think, some public input. But it is going to happen tomorrow.
That's the fixed rate. So, okay, if there are not, and if there is nothing further, we will adjourn to a regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday.
Madam Mayor.
Never mind, we're not there yet. Kindon?
We have three items for closed session to return to.
We are not adjourning to our regularly scheduled meeting. We're going back into closed session.
Correct.
Great. Okay, thank you.